Everyone, it is 6:30 on November 5th, and I would like to call this regular meeting of the Lansing School District Board of Education to order. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Dr. Beverly?
Present.
Dr. Body?
Here.
Dr. Burrows?
Here.
Ms. Hodgins?
Ms. Lawrence?
Here.
Mrs. Lawrence?
Here.
Mr. Lopez?
Here.
Dr. Rodriguez?
Present.
And Mrs. Willis?
Present.
Quorum is present.
Thank you very much. Moving on, any additions to the agenda? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to public comment on agenda.
Excuse me, excuse me.
Doc.
I need to add a report of the ISOA.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Under, under committee reports?
Right.
Okay, we'll make that number five, under committee reports.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and I know we have a public comment submission from Denise Fitzpatrick. Ms. Hodgins, do you have an addition to the agenda? I can't hear you. I can't hear you, Ms. Hodgins.
I have a question to ask you. The meetings for the MASB, Guillermo has been the person almost four years. Last meeting, we agreed that I was gonna be and someone else. Are we gonna be there and have to go with Guillermo, or are we gonna be substitutes in case Guillermo can't make it?
So, so, Mr. Lopez, I don't know if you wanted to speak about this a little bit, but I know the MASB is, this event is all virtual this year, so there's not a limit on how many people can participate.
Okay, okay.
Well, yeah, that's the case.
But is Guillermo still the main honcho representing the district, or are now three of us representing?
Well, you, you won't be voting on anything. Their, their bylaws don't allow for any virtual voting.
Okay.
Is that right, Mr. Lopez?
Correct, and, and we're not gonna be voting on anything else, on anything today, tonight. Any changes or anything.
Okay. Okay, thank you, everybody. Denise Fitzpatrick is our public comment for this evening.
Do not see her in attendees.
Carlin as an attendee. Hello, Carlin. Okay, then we will move on to presentations. No presentations. Anybody wanna talk about the election? Just kidding. We're not gonna talk about that. And don't check Twitter for the next hour. Let's all take a mental release. We're gonna move on to report from superintendent, Mr. Sinicropi.
Thank you, Mrs. Lawrence. Start out on a sad note. We had three recent passings of note in the school district family. Mark Jean, instructional assistant and coach at Wexford and Wood Creek, passed away several weeks ago. Virginia Jenny Brankland, a retired public safety officer, passed away last week, and I had the, I don't, I knew her a little bit. She was one of the original public safety officers when the public safety office started, so it was sad. And then Vanessa Westmoreland, who was a teacher for the past three years at Willow, and also passed away, and I would like to just have a moment of silence for those three folks. Thank you. On a brighter note, I would like to congratulate Guillermo Lopez and Nino Rodriguez for their reelection to the school board, and they'll, they'll take their seats again in January, new seats, and also, big congratulations to Robin Moore, who will be joining the board in January. Congratulations to those three individuals. Two of our students have had recent medical challenges. One student, this past, about two weeks ago, I believe, received a heart transplant, and another student is awaiting a kidney transplant. We wish both of them a speeding recovery and a get well soon, and hope to see them back soon on the street. I also wanna congratulate two Everett High School staff members for winning their categories in the Lansing City Pulse Top of the Town Contest. Clara Martinez was named best dance instructor, and these are both Everett, I said Everett High School. And then Ben Billings was named best high school teacher. So, congratulations to those two. And I guess I just wanna say, this is the tip of the iceberg for us in the school district. The outstanding instruction that is delivered every day in our district. Thanks to Clara and Ben for ensuring that our students have the opportunity to dream big. And I had to say that for Dr. Chapman, because that's her, that's her line, and I stole it. Lastly, many of us in the school district are participating in No Shave November to raise funds for winter clothing for our students. I wanna have a big thank you to Chuck Alberts for keeping this effort moving forward. And I don't know if you can tell very much with me, but it is starting to itch, and I'm looking a little more like Santa Claus than I used to when I had a beard. So, we're looking forward to raising funds for our, our students. Tonight, we're gonna do Did You Knows, and we're gonna do them a little bit different. This is a theme, Did You Know? You received from me earlier this week, and it's been out on social media that we are adjusting our schedule, screen to screen schedule, starting next week. So, all of the Did You Knows relate somehow to our new schedule. So, we will start with, Suzie, did you say you wanted to go first tonight, or was it, is it Sergio?
It's me tonight.
Okay, go, Suzie Corbin, please.
Thank you, good evening. Did you know that members of the executive team held an all-day collaborative meeting to finalize the student and staff class day schedule for the second marking period that starts Monday, November 9? This was a result of feedback given to the executive team from our staff and our LASSA and LSEA leadership. We are on our mark, we are ready, and set to go.
Thank you. Mr. Sergio Kek?
Good evening. Did you know that we will offer a special parent university session for Spanish bilingual families to better understand A-Day on Monday, November 16? It is of utmost importance that our special populations are supported and thrive with our new schedule. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kek. Mr. John Lang?
Evening. Did you know that the second marking period schedule reduces screen time and beds not only exploratory enrichment and information support for students, but also professional learning and collaboration for staff specific to virtual teaching and equitable access?
Thank you, John, and I wanna just make it know it was John. That's probably the first time he's ever did a Did You Know, and there were no numbers in it. So, thank you, John, you handled that really well. Next up, Ms. Cordelia Black.
Thank you. Did you know that the Office of School Culture through Parent University will offer a series of workshops beginning November 9 to help parents and caregivers better understand A-Day and how to support their students? Dates and times will be posted to our website and social media outlets by tomorrow, Friday, November 6. Thank you.
Thank you, Cordelia. Ms. Jennifer, Ben, Jennifer? Jennifer, I'm gonna change your name, yeah. Jessica Benavides, I'm sorry.
Good evening, everyone. Did you know that the new schedule includes a blend of synchronous or live and asynchronous independent enrichment learning on Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday? Wednesday will be 100% asynchronous, or as we call it, A-Day. Students have the option on Wednesdays to complete homework and/or self-selected enrichment learning for core content and the arts. The staff A-Day schedule allows for collegial collaboration and offering support to students and families that just need a reset.
Thank you, Jessica. Dr. Camila Diaz?
Good evening, everyone. Did you know that the new schedule allows for student-driven choice for virtual exploratory learning, including museum tours, national park tours, current events, music performances, and foreign language activities, along with virtual tours through our very own Ebersol Environmental Learning Center?
Thank you, Dr. Diaz. And last, Dr. Delisa Chapman?
Good evening, everyone. Did you know that the ultimate goal of the new schedule is to provide a balanced, screen-time learning environment that embeds social-emotional learning support and academic interventions for students, while also allowing our staff to collaborate and provide support to one another, but most of all, to our students and their families at a time when mental health and moral support is needed as a part of self-care during the COVID-19 pandemic?
Thank you, executive team. We're gonna work on our, our themes as we go through our Did You Knows for the rest of the year at least, we'll look at that. And that concludes our report for tonight.
Thank you very much, everyone. Moving on to routine matters and old business. We will start with our committee reports. Facilities Committee, Dr. B.
Facilities Committee has not met since our last meeting.
Thank you, Dr. Beverly. Personnel Committee, Mrs. Willis?
Hello. Sorry, I told Madam President that I had a transportation delay with getting my little one from daycare, so I'm just pulling in my driveway now. But just update the board that we have a, you should have a facility, I'm sorry, a personnel report in your board packet that includes, that includes information for the board, as well as information for the board to approve, which will be part of our consent agenda. The personnel report does include the notification of one of our deceased staff members, but not the second one. And that is it for the personnel report. Is there any questions?
I see none.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we will move on to Policy Committee, Dr. Rodriguez?
Thank you, Madam President. And I don't have anything with the Personnel Committee. The only thing I got is that we received a notification from Neola telling us that we can continue to having virtual meetings. And the second is, the, we will approve the second reading for the policy 2266 tonight, regarding Title IX.
Any questions for Dr. Rodriguez? Okay, thank you, Doc. Moving on to our Equity Committee, Mrs. Willis. I don't know if you've met since our last time. Oh, there she is.
Yeah, thank you. The Equity Committee has met since we had our last meeting, so the Equity Committee has had a total of two meetings. During that meeting, we primarily focused on the criteria that we would like to use to assess the audit firm RFPs. So, we actually developed our rubric that we'll be using to score those RFPs. And so, the next meeting is November 16. So, we're hoping at that time to get through all of the scoring and assessments of the firm, so that we are able to make a recommendation back to the board.
Thank you. And thank you to everybody who's serving on that committee as well. I know you guys have some heavy lifting to do, and we certainly appreciate everything that everyone's doing. Any questions for Mrs. Willis? Okey-doke. Moving on to ISOA. Doc, we're back to you.
Thank you very much, and we met yesterday. And the majority of the members of the different districts were present. We had a presentation from the social worker of Ingham County, and we discussed the situation, social, emotional situation of our students, our communities, our parents, and teachers, and administrators, and board members. We are all, you know, in these difficult, different times, and they offer some ideas, and also, how Ingham County is helping the district, and maybe we need to call them and see if we can receive some benefit from, from the IISD. After that, with every district member or their president were telling what good the districts are, and I report the best thing from our district the best I can. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Rodriguez. Any questions for Dr. Rodriguez? Okay, we will move on to our consent agenda. Our consent agenda this evening includes the approval of the October 15th regular board meeting minutes, and the receipt and approval of the Personnel Report. May I have a motion?
Madam President?
Ms. Liljy?
I move that the Board of Education approve the consent agenda as presented.
For it.
It's been moved by Mrs. Liljy, supported by Dr. Burrows. Any questions or discussion regarding our consent agenda for this evening? Okay, will the clerk please call the roll?
Dr. Beverly?
Yes.
Dr. Body?
Yes.
Dr. Burrows?
Yes.
Ms. Hodgins? Mrs. Lawrence?
Yes.
Mrs. Liljy?
Yes.
Mr. Lopez?
Yes.
Dr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mrs. Willis?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. See, Nevada, it's not that hard to count votes, right? Anyway. What are you guys doing? Moving on to action items, discussion items for this evening. The first up is bid recommendation for public safety radios.
I can, Mr. Lang? Yes, I'm sorry. Go ahead, start out, give the basics on this, and then turn it over to Ms. Black for any details. But essentially, the Public Safety 911 system for radios is going away from Ingham County and going to a state system, so we need new radios for public safety officers at offices. And we have two, two proposals that were submitted, or one was through the MyDeal contract, those Motorola solutions, and the other one was for Command Communications, which was the one that is being recommended for $132,657, and it's using the sinking fund dollars as part of the plan for securing the pathways and use of those funds. So, Ms. Black, if you have any more details to add to that, otherwise, open to questions, too.
Hi, um, thank you, John. I just wanted to share, just to give a little bit of history as to why this bid recommendation is on the table. As John mentioned, currently, the Lansing School District is a member of our Ingham County 911 dispatch center, allowing access, immediate access to that center for emergency communications by the push of a button. However, the county system is limited in regards to how much area it can cover, and they oftentimes experience delays in their communication between the dispatch center and first responders. In November of 2018, the Ingham County voters approved a ballot proposal allowing Ingham to increase the telephone surcharge from 42 cents to $1.80, which would basically allow them to move from the county system over to a state, the State of Michigan Emergency Communication System, infrastructure, and basically expanding the system across the counties. Once that takes place, the current 911 Ingham County system will become obsolete, as well as the Lansing School District's radio system. And so, the, the current radios that they're carrying today, public safety officers and administrators, as I said, will become obsolete, and they, we will no longer have a way of communicating internally or externally with emergency personnel. And so, and then on top of that, with the recent removal of our Lansing Police School Resource Officers, it is, the, the investment is even more vital to the, to the health and safety of, of our operations. And so, that is the reason why the bid is, is on the table. Any questions? Thank you.
Dr. Burrows?
This is just, I'm just curious. What's gonna happen to the old radios?
They're coming to you.
I don't want them. No.
You have to give them to all your friends.
Are we gonna be able to sell them or refurb them? I'm just curious.
I think that through our tech, they will probably go to our technology department. Ms. Benavides may be able to talk about that. I think that in, in times that I've known in the past, these kinds of items are auctioned off, so.
Thanks.
Mrs. Willis?
Thank you. I'm curious, and it's, I'm okay if we don't know the answer to this question, but given that we've, we're changing systems, do we have any sort of security on how long this system will last? Or, you know, I don't wanna replace something that we may have to, I don't know, I guess there's nothing we can do about it, but I'm just curious if we have any idea on how long this will be, this new system will be good for, is my first question. My second question is just about the urgency of doing, of updating these radios, given that we are not yet returned to in-person instruction.
Correct. So, the new system, state system, is, is scheduled to be live by April, April 21. And so, the urgency is, it's, it's important. It's, it's pretty high. In regards to the life of the system, typically, emergency communication systems have about a 10-year lifespan, anywhere from an eight, I would say anywhere from an eight to 10-year lifespan.
Look, can I, for, let me add you something, Mrs. Willis, is that our public safety officers are still working, are making home visits, so they're still in need of communication for, in that respect right now.
I also, can I add, the, as Ms. Black mentioned, that the system will be online in April of next year. There's also a setup timeframe that's needed for the radios in between the purchase to when they're ready to be able to be used live.
Any more questions? Okay, Ms. Liljy?
Just, I, I don't know if this is the right time to ask this question, but it popped in my head like, oh, maybe they can use him for winter sports. And that just made me realize like, oh, I would like to hear a little more about that when the time is right. But in the context of this conversation, that could be a use for them if they're ready in time.
That is correct. Yes, that is correct. We hope to have a very smooth transition.
Okay. Okay, thanks, everybody.
Madam President?
Uh, Dr. Beverly?
Can I move that we go ahead with the purchase?
Yes. Can I get, so, thank you. It's been moved by Dr. Beverly, supported by Mrs. Liljy, that we purchase Cordelia's radios, is what I'm gonna call them.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Dr. Beverly?
Yes.
Dr. Body?
Yes.
Dr. Burrows?
Yes.
Mrs. Hodgins? Mrs. Lawrence?
Yes.
Mrs. Liljy?
Yes.
Mr. Lopez?
Yes.
Dr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mrs. Willis?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. Enjoy those radios, you guys.
Madam Chair?
Mr. Lopez?
I have to leave at this moment, so I'll see you later.
Okay.
Adios.
Adios. We are going to move on for everybody's favorite event of the year, our Audit Report. We have with us this evening Kim Adams, Steve Piesco, and Sherri Blinkenship, and I'm gonna let someone else take it away.
Let me just say a couple words, and then I'll turn it over to John for a second, and then we'll get rolling here. Each year at this time, you get the Audit Report, and you had, you got, received a copy of that in your board packet this week. It was also, it's in the board book also. So, we look forward to this each year, because we look forward to having, to hear some good stuff about our record-keeping and everything else. So, John, is there anything you would add before Steve and Sherri get started? John or Kim?
Not really, other than just thanking Kim and our, the finance team for the great work that they do this year, or every year. That's it.
Okay. Steve and Sherri, go, take it away.
All right, well, thanks. I'm gonna talk, and Sherri's gonna share the part point, I think, summarizing it.
It's disabled. Can the, can the host just enable the screen sharing?
Yep.
In the meantime, I'll reiterate what John said. It's been a very unique year, continues to be a very unique year. Obviously, it was a mix of some in-person, a lot of remote, use of the portal and various other ways to complete the audit in the current year. Not only auditing things like controls while you were in, in school and in person, but also auditing controls during the unanticipated shutdown. So, there's a little bit extra audit work, but after report, the controls continued in place and are strong at the Lansing School District. Gotta thank Tom, or John Lang, Kim Adams, and their team for being very, very well-prepared, as usual, very responsive to all our questions, whether we are in-person or remote requesting the information. The audit was done pretty much just as timely as usual, and really, really, really appreciate them being well-prepared and taking this, taking this process seriously. We did spend about an hour going through it in detail with Mrs. Lawrence and Dr. Burrows and management a couple weeks ago. So, similar to last year, we'll go at a high-level summary this time. And obviously, if anyone has any questions, or John or Kim have anything to add, feel free to chime in at any point. With that, we'll get started with the Audit Report. And obviously, we prepare our audit procedures in order to come up with the auditor's opinion and the independent auditors' report. We put our audit report on the district's financials, so while we helped draft the 80-plus-page financial statement, the three pages of the independent auditors' report are really the only three pages that are ours, is the auditor's. I'm happy to report, the opinion is a clean opinion or unmodified opinion, so the, the best opinion the district can receive, and it's similar to what you've received in the past, so. Very good opinion there. I will point out, in the auditor, independent auditors' report, there is an emphasis of a matter paragraph this year that you won't see if you looked at last year's report, and that's referencing Note 12, which, which we'll touch on as we go through, but it's additional information that the district adopted GASB Governmental Accounting Standard Number 84, we talked about in the past, but it's redefining what constitutes a fiduciary activity, and there were some getting fund balance restatements due to that. We'll see it when we get to Note 12. The second eight to 10 pages is called the Management Discussion Analysis. It's kind of a 10-page summary, or nine-page summary of the rest of the audit report we're gonna go through. I'll highlight a couple things. We'll see on, on the PowerPoint here, the student enrollment count for, blended count for June 2020 was 10,498. That was down about 212 students from the previous June 30 year-end. One big thing that's not in the rest of the report, at the end of the Management Discussion Analysis, is the factors bearing on the district's future, so the 2021 school year. I will touch a little bit more on the 2021 school year as we go through this, but obviously, COVID-19 and operating a obviously COVID-nineteen and operating a, uh, school district and the uncertainty of a global pandemic and the daily issues and changes that are, that are happening because of that is definitely a huge challenge for everybody, not only in schools, but across the country and the world. Uh, but I know Sam and the rest of the leadership team, um, have daily issues related to this. And that'll continue for a while, I, I think. Um, and then obviously, the other big thing is continuation of the bond projects and the pathway promise. And, and that's on, on a much more positive note there, doing some great things for the district. Uh, the governmental funds balance sheet, we'll see the total assets in the general fund, about thirty-three-point-three million, predominantly made up of about twelve-point-six million of cash, cash equivalents and about seventeen-eight, seventeen-point-eight million of intergovernmental receivables, which is predominantly your July and August state aid payments. Uh, twenty-two-point-eight million of liabilities, of which the, the biggest liability is about eleven-point-four million of accrued salaries and retirement for, uh, July and August teacher pay. Uh, ending fund balance of about ten-point-five million, which is six-point-seven percent of your total expenditures for the year. So, six-point-seven percent of fund balance obviously is a dip from last year. And we'll, we get to the next page, we'll see the, uh, the decline in the fund balance. The total revenues of one-hundred-and-fifty-six million in the general fund. The major, major revenues are property taxes and state aid, as in the past. Total expenditures of one-hundred-and-fifty-seven million and, and, and use of general fund fund balance of just over one-point-four million dollars, uh, decreasing from eleven-point-nine million and, and ending fund balance to the ten-point-five million I mentioned. Again, six-point-seven percent of expenditures. You'll see your major capital projects fund there for your bond projects. Also, you did have just under one-point-two million of investment earnings on that, on those bond proceeds. You spent about sixteen-and-a-half million in the current year, uh, leaving you with just about thirty-four-point-four million dollars of bond proceeds at June thirty, twenty-twenty. Uh, I, I, obviously, it says June thirty, and I'm sure those projects continued throughout the summer as well, so. The footnotes, uh, basically, twenty, about twenty-eight pages of additional detail on the financial statements. I'll, I'll highlight a few of them here. Uh, note one, very important note here because it really discusses how, when, when you issue bonds, you need to, uh, audit those bonds in accordance with Section thirteen fifty-one A and the bonded construction fund requirements, as lo, as well as the voter-approved bond language. And we spent about sixteen-and-a-half million dollars of those in the current year. Uh, note one describes how we do audit those in its, in their entirety in accordance with the bonded construction fund language and the voter, like, voter-approved bond language. Uh, no issues identified, everything was spent in accordance with those. Uh, and we do accumulate that year after year after year until those bonds are completely spent out. And then at that time, the district needs to file what's called a hundred-and-twenty-day audit with the state of Michigan. And instead of having to go back four, five, six years and re-audit all those expenditures, since we do it annually, during the, uh, annual audit, we can just accumulate those audit reports and file the report uh, when those funds are completely spent, so saving a lot of time and, and money at the end of the bond project. Uh, the next note is the, the debt millage, just to touch on real quick. You do maintain the four-point-six debt millage. Uh, that's below the state average of about five-point-four mills. And, and we, we audited about, we audited a hundred-and-five school districts in the state this year. And many of them are in the seven-to-twelve mill range, so four-point-six is significantly lower than that. Uh, the capital assets, note four, uh, this is just additional detail of your capital assets. Obviously, your major, the vast majority of your assets are buildings and additions. Um, obviously, with, uh, the New Eastern is a big chunk in the last few years, but you did add eighteen-point-eight million of adds in the current year. Again, sixteen-and-a-half million of that was from the bond projects. You did, and you had about five-point-four million of depreciation on those assets. So, total lending capital assets net of depreciation was just over a hundred-and-forty-five million dollars. Uh, note five is detail of your, your four outstanding bonds. Uh, there's two, uh, six-point-nine million that'll be paid off in May twenty-twenty-two and, and six-point-seven million that'll be paid off in May of twenty-twenty-three. And then the major, the pathway promise, the bond proceeds obviously will not be paid off until twenty forty-one. And the total outstanding debt at the end of the year is a hundred-and-twenty-two million dollars for the district. Uh, but as we discussed in, in more detail, uh, at the, uh, draft meeting, the, uh, annual amortization requirements for those bonds is, is just over around twelve million dollars for twenty twenty-one, twenty-two and twenty-three. And then the, then the, uh, annual requirement drops about four million dollars after that. So, what that does is create an opportunity to maintain your, your millage rate and, and continue to get new bonds approved without any increase in taxable taxes due the, uh, to the voters. Maybe get it, continue to do projects within the district under the pathway promise. Uh, note twelve is the note I referenced in the, uh, independent auditors' report. This is a detail again on how we adopted GASB eighty-four and the effect it had. You'll see here it added a restatement of about five-hundred-thousand dollars to the general fund fund balance and about one-point-five million to a, a permanent fund. Uh, this is, uh, scholarship endowment, which only the, uh, earnings are allowed to be spent on. So, those will be now tracked independently in this permanent fund and that the interest and earnings then are able to be used for scholarships annually. Previously, those were reported at both in, uh, uh, agency fiduciary accounts. I know thirteen of the last footnote is, is just another, uh, upcoming pronouncement. It's not effective for a couple more years. We mentioned it last year, it was delayed because of the COVID-nineteen, another two years, so it, it's, uh, uh, government accounting standard on leases, but any significant leases the district has, potentially like copiers or such, those will be get recorded as a right-to-use asset and the corresponding liability. But we'll continue to keep the district up to speed on that and, and remind you annually until it takes effect in, uh, twenty twenty-two. Uh, probably the most important schedule here is the, uh, general fund budget to actual. You'll see the total revenues, budget, final budget of just under a hundred-and-sixty-five million. Actual revenues of one-hundred-and-fifty-six-point-four million. So eight-point-four million less than budget. Uh, expenditures, one-hundred-and-sixty-two-point-nine, final budget, actual was one-hundred-and-fifty-seven. The five-point-five million better than budget. A big chunk of that, about six million on both the revenue and expense side, is because the district budgets a hundred percent of all their federal grants. And obviously, those are, aren't, aren't spent in their entirety annually and they're able to be carried over from year to the following year, so the funds are not lost. But, um, obviously, there's less revenue and the corresponding less expense related to that. The other piece, you'll see ending deficiency of final budget. Um, planned for a seven-hundred-and-fifty-seven-thousand-dollar increase in fund balance and ended up at a, a, a negative one-million-four-twenty-eight. So, negative, or two-point-one million worse than budget, but remember, you adopted your final budget in June and in August, the state came and said, we're taking a hundred-and-seventy-five dollars per student, which was just over one-point-eight-three-seven million dollars for the district, so. You had no opportunity to re-amend your budget, you had no idea that was, that cut was coming. And the other, the remaining portion of this, revenues being under budget are due to that cut of almost one-point-eight-five million dollars. So, really, when you add that back, um, you, you did, you were slightly lower than budget, probably due to additional costs related to COVID and PPE and various things like that. But you would have added about three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars to fund balance. Um, and, and been within point-two-two percent of your expenditures. So, we would say your budgeting is, is very effective. Um, and, and you knew, you really knew exactly where you were as of June thirty and, and based on the facts and knowledge that you had at that time. Uh, I would, I will, uh, elaborate a little here. Obviously, you used one-point-four-two-eight million and there was the hundred-and-seventy-five-dollar cut in nineteen-twenty school year. Twenty-twenty-one school year, there's a lot of one-time funds. There's a change in the student count to a super blend, that's one time potentially. Uh, there's Corona relief funds, there's COVID costs, there's Esther funds, there's, there's a lot of one-time funds that are potential revenue in the twenty-twenty-one school year and the cut was in the nineteen-twenty school year, so. Just wanna reiterate, those are one-time funds at this point. And it's a good opportunity to, to at least rebuild the one-point-five million dollars you used out of fund balance, probably additional potentially, hopefully, and build that fund balance back towards the ten percent target range. And, uh, don't try to fix the structural deficit with one-time funds because the twenty-one, twenty-two state budget at the current time is, is looking pretty unhealthy and, and there's definitely potential for additional cuts in that twenty-one, twenty-two school year based on the facts we know today. So, just wanted to reiterate that. I think originally, obviously, back in June, you estimated for a large deficit in twenty-twenty-one. Uh, facts changed, the cut wasn't as big or wasn't at all for twenty-twenty-one. And then there's a lot of these one-time funds and based on, uh, accounting standards, none of those revenues could be recorded until twenty-twenty-one to offset the hundred-and-seventy-five-dollar cut. So, there's just a timing difference in some of those as well, so. Keep that in mind. Obviously, uh, we, we've had a lot of talks and communication with, with John and Kim on this and, and, and Mr. Sinicoppi, so if, if anyone has any questions throughout the next few months, these, these things are changing rapidly. Uh, I do sit on the state committee where sets the standards of how all this gets recorded, so. Sit in a lot of meetings and, and, and as soon as things are decided that we relay, relay the message to the district management as well. Uh, the next section really is the, uh, a couple of graphs here on revenue. Uh, you'll see, like I mentioned, almost fifty percent of your revenue comes from state aid. Uh, twenty-five percent is local sources or property taxes predominantly. Eighteen is federal, eighteen percent is federal and then incoming transfers and others is from the ISD. On the expenditure side, uh, majority of your expenditures, forty percent are instruction, thirty-nine percent is in support. Uh, you did have ten percent in capital outlay, that's mostly the bond projects. Uh, debt service of about six percent and food service of about four percent. Uh, the last section then, along with the financial audit, we have to do a federal compliance audit because obviously, the district receives well in excess of the seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar minimum, uh, requirement for a federal compliance audit. Uh, we did have to audit three major programs this year. Title I, Special Ed Cluster and the Magnet School Grant. So, happy to report, uh, clean opinion on all those funds. Uh, we, we not only test those for compliance of the programs, we also have to test them for controls over compliance, meaning not only did you follow the rules, but how did you know you were following the rules? And, and we test on most of the, both of those things and, and there is no issues, no findings, no significant deficiencies, no material weaknesses, uh, to report on any of those grants. Those represented about thirty-five-point-one percent of your, almost, or just over thirty-four million of federal funds. Uh, again, that number will go, go up significantly next year because the Corona relief funds and, and a lot of those one-time funds I mentioned are all, also federal funds. So your, your total federal funds will increase, uh, quite drastically for the twenty-twenty-one school year. Uh, you are low-risk audit either, which is, it was a key, important fact because low-risk audit means a minimum requirement is, we have to audit at least twenty percent of your federal awards. And if you were not low-risk audit, it means you, you had material weakness or issues in prior audits. We would have to audit forty percent of your total federal expenditures and obviously adding additional time, effort and cost to the district. So, it's important that, that everyone takes those serios, seriously and they, they do a very good job at, at, uh, not only following the compliance requirement, but there's, there's very thorough controls over those compliance requirements. There's a couple of letters, uh, letter to those charged with governance, similar in the past. Uh, basically, it's a standard form that we require to give to the board. It does talk about how you adopted GASB eighty-four in the current year, that would be one, one nuance. But other than that, it discusses significant estimates for employee compensated absences and the lifespan of, of your capital assets. And that just says, we didn't have any issues with management. There's no incorrect statements, no difficulties encountered while performing the audit and, uh, no other matters noted while we performed the audit. Uh, one management letter comment, not a, not a terrible one, but in the nonprofit food service fund, the maximum, uh, fund balance allowed in that is thirty-three percent of expenditures. So, it's three months of expenditures, but three, three-nines because the three months of the school year. So thirty-three percent, uh, year-ending fund balance for the food service fund ended up at thirty-four-and-a-half percent. Uh, there was, uh, it's a higher reimbursement rate partially in the, with the unanticipated shutdown and the summer food service reimbursements are higher than the normal free and reduced lunch reimbursements is part of the reason that, that led to that increase. So there'll be additional funds probably in the twenty-twenty-one school year is that, um, free, free food for everybody is allowed for the rest of the school year. All that means is you have to come up with a plan to spend down those funds, I think. Uh, talking to John, he can elaborate, but I think they already had a plan to spend a, a significant million dollars, a million and a half dollars of those, uh, on some capital improvements around the food service area already, so. That would, you, you may get a letter from the Department of Ed and you'll just respond with the plan of how you're gonna spend that down. Other than that, everything went really smooth and we appreciate the opportunity to work with the district as always. And, uh, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Steve. Uh, Mrs. Lawrence, are there any questions that any board members have?
Really, guys?
I don't have a, I, I don't have a question, I just have a statement.
Go for it.
That I'm really impressed with how the, the, this, the small amount and the degree of variance between expected and budgeted. That means that you guys are doing a really good job being good stewards of district finances and I want to just applaud you for that, because that's really impressive. And a budget of our size, to have that little variance between budgeted and actual is pretty darn good.
And I, I just wanna jump in and, and say that I, I think I made almost exactly the same comment last year during the audit report. Um, so this is something that the district has been doing multiple years in a row, so it's very impressive.
I would give, I would give much of that credit to Kim and John and, uh, as long as we keep listening to them, we'll be, we'll do well.
I'd like to echo my colleague's comments. Um, and then also, um, put some additional emphasis on, um, the way in which we've been managing bond funds. Um, as were highlighted, uh, in the presentation. Uh, I think that it is important that, uh, the public recognize, um, how closely we are, uh, keeping an eye as we steward those additional funds for investments in our district. Um, and, and thankful that, uh, once again, um, we've got another clean audit, so thanks to the entire team.
And I just, just to echo that and then, uh, put it in a recommendation for how we can spend down the food service categorical, um, that I'm totally open to us, um, opening another food truck. So, that might be how we'll have to bu, balance the budget next year is with the food trucks, just throwing that out there.
Okay.
Mrs. Lawrence?
Yes.
May I just add, I just, one more thing, and that is just for the board's and public's benefit, is that we are starting to look at, we're having a budget review meeting tomorrow. We have a three-hour meeting scheduled to start looking at this FY twenty-two's budget and what Steve got, was just talking about and all those things that, uh, in order for us to be, to continue to receive these audits, we're starting a lot earlier than, than I've ever done in the past. So we're starting that tomorrow.
Great. Would anyone like to? I don't know, make a motion? Or not?
Madam President.
I would make a motion, oh, okay.
Dr. Beverly?
Thank you. Uh, I recommend that the Board of Education, um, accept the Lansing School District audit as detailed in the attachment.
Second.
It's been moved by Dr. Beverly, supported by Dr. Rodriguez. Any further discussion regarding our wonderful audit? Okay, will the clerk please call the roll?
Dr. Beverly?
Absolutely, yes.
Dr. Body?
Yes.
Yes.
Dr. Burrows?
Yes.
Mrs. Hodgins? Mrs. Lawrence?
Yes.
Mrs. Lilji?
Yes.
Mrs. Lopez, I'm sorry, Mr. Lopez.
He, he went to MASP.
Oh, that's right, I'm so sorry. Dr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
And Mrs. Willis?
Yes.
Passes.
Okay, thank you, and thanks to everyone involved in the audit once again. Next up is our 2021 Summer Tax Resolution. Mr. Sinicropi, I don't see the resolution in our packet.
Uh-oh.
Do any other board members? No, okay, no.
Okay, so we will bring that to you in two weeks.
Okay.
John, is that a problem, waiting two weeks on this?
No, it just has to be approved before the end of the year.
Okay, we will have it on the 19th then.
Okay, and thank you, Ms. Lilji, for pointing that out to me. Moving on to second reading of Policy 2266. I know we've already discussed this, Dr. Rodriguez, do you want to give us a refresher?
Okay, thank you very much, Madam President. I think that we discussed that about two weeks or three weeks ago. And this, the policy 2266 is regarding the Title IX and all the, all the regulations around Title IX. There is, there are new, new laws that we had to follow. The, we had to change some of the previous policies to the new policies. And I am sure then we will continue making changes because the legislature want to create more, more laws, and we had to follow them. But at this time, we had to approve, we had to ask the board member to approve the second reading of 2266. And also going to change, I'm going to ask again, then maybe in one of the ISS meeting, we had the superintendent and the person in charge of the Title IX to come and to present to us these new regulations. In that way, we, all board members are aware of what is going on because that is new for all of us. Then when we discussed that on Iola, I had the superintendent and some member of his team came to the meeting and, and we spent a lot of time learning and, and see how we are going to disseminate this information to the all member of the district because that goes from the, our students, our parents, teachers, everybody who is involved in the district. They, they should know these new policies, and we board members, which you know too. Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you, Dr. Rodriguez. May I have a motion?
Well, I, I am going, I wanted one of the, the members of the policy to do it, but I will, I will make the motion that the Board of Education consider Policy 2266 for the second reading.
Support that. It's been moved by Dr. Rodriguez, supported by Mrs. Lilji. Any further questions regarding second reading of this policy?
Madam President, I would just ask a friendly amendment that the motion read its second reading and adoption of the policy.
Thank you, Mrs. Willis. Dr. Rodriguez, you okay with that? I think you're saying yes.
Thank you very much, yes, yes.
Okay, thank you. No more question, okay, will the clerk please call the roll?
Dr. Beverly?
Yes.
Dr. Body?
Yes.
Dr. Burrows?
Yes.
Mrs. Hodgins? Mrs. Lawrence?
Yes.
Mrs. Lilji?
Yes.
Mr. Lopez, oh, he's not here. Dr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mrs. Willis?
Yes.
Passes.
Thank you. Okay, we are going to move on to our report from Secretary and announcements.
Thank you, Madam President. I have invitations, communications, and announcements. There is three things tonight, and I'm going to do my best to communicate to all of you and the public what is going on in our district besides, do you know? A reminder that our car side meal pickup schedule will continue for the duration of our screen-to-screen learning plan. See the Lansing School District website for details. Free pandemic tutoring services program for Lansing School District students, grade four to 12. Pandemic Tutoring Services is a volunteer organization created to supply additional one-on-one and in small group services to students for free as they adapt to their learning online. This organization consists of Michigan State University students with a mission to support learning within the Lansing School District for the duration of the coronavirus pandemic. Free tutoring services for students, grade four to 12 in the Lansing School District via video chat in math and English with other subjects possible based on request. For more information and to sign up, please visit www.lansingsschool.net/tutor. Tuesday, November 10, 2020, Parent University, I Don't Understand My Child Homework. Date, November 10, time, 5:30 PM to 6:30 PM. Location, online web binary, cost, free. Sign up for I Don't Understand My Child Homework. How can I help him or her? Again, the website, lansingsschools.net. Wednesday, November 11, 2020, Parents University, Helping Your Student Work Through Conflict Restoratively. Date, November 11, time, 5:30 PM to 7:00 PM. Virtual, cost is free. Sign up for Helping Your Student Work Through Conflict Restoratively. And the website, one more time, lansingsschools.net. I will recommend to go to the lansingsschool.net for all this and other information to the community. Lansing, Thursday, November 12, 2020, Information Study Session Board Meeting, 6:30 PM. Virtual meeting. Wednesday, November 18. I, I, I am sure everybody will to understand that one. No School Professional Development Day. Saturday, November 21, 2020, Annual Pathway to the Holiday Event. The Lansing School District in partnership with Sodexo Magic will provide 500 Lansing School District families with the Georgia's Thanksgiving Pathway to the holiday package that will include the turkey and other holiday dinner fixings. This year event will be Saturday, November 21, 2020 at the Hill Center, 5815 Wise Road, Lansing, Michigan. From 12:00 PM to 2:00 PM. You will receive more information in the mail very soon. And I think we receive an email if you want to volunteer for this particular event. Thank you, and I, I think that's it for tonight.
Mrs. Lilji?
I just wondered if, Sam, you could clarify when there's a day, like the 18th is a day off or an A day?
The 18th will be a day off, it's one of our seven, or seven professional development days during the school year instead of having late start Wednesdays. So that would actually be a day off.
Okay, so we will still have those days, we have five more after this. And that's different than an A day. And that probably means that like on the day off, the learning labs are closed? But on an A day, the learning labs are open?
Correct, is that, Mr. Kek, is that right? That's correct, isn't it? Yes, okay, thank you.
Yeah, let's make sure that everybody understands.
Yep, good point.
Thank you.
We will.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments, anything from the board? Everybody ready to go back and binge CNN for the rest of the night, or is that just, just me?
I don't like CNN as much as Steve.
Who do you, oh, yeah, yeah, I know everybody's got a giant crush on him now.
I, I, I stick, I stick to the, the internet sources like Nate Silver and David Wasserman.
Yeah, Nate Silver is good.
Plus, they have pretty maps.
Well, I, I, I enjoyed to see all of you tonight without all this getting more normalized, I hope. Then, thank you for, for everything that happened tonight.
Thank you, Doc. Okay, well, with no further business before the board, at 7:32, we are adjourned. Thanks, everybody.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Bye.
Bye.